I'd like to call the city council meeting for Monday, July 7th, 2025 to order. Could you please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perform a roll call at this time, Councilor Benson.
Present.
Councilor Peterson is excused from tonight's meeting. Councilor Johnson?
Present.
And welcome back, Councilor.
Thank you.
Councilor DeWall?
Present.
Mayor Ward's also in attendance. Please let the minutes reflect all others in attendance, including Attorney Henke, Administrator Rich, and Administrator Assistant Mizuko, Jim Twami, Jared Hinks, Jim Schwartzbauer, Steve Anderson, Sergeant Rebo, and Chief Gatis. All right, we are scheduled for a public hearing tonight for the proposed resolution 20-25 vacate a portion of First Street between North Second Avenue and US Highway 2. So the public hearing is when the city offers a time to address city council regarding the proposed resolution 20-25. As a rule, the council will listen to all comments, questions, or concerns. If you'd like to address the city council during a public hearing, please come forward to the podium. Before you begin, please state your name, address for the public hearing minutes. To ensure that those in attendance have an opportunity to address the city council, we'll be limiting to the comments to three minutes. Anyone addressing the city council will be prohibited from using obscene, profane, or threatening language or boisterous conduct that disrupts a public hearing or the security of the public. At this time, we'll begin public hearing number one on resolution 20-25, and we'll open the floor to anyone wishing to speak. We'll give three opportunities for public comment. So this will be the first opportunity for public comment. If you're willing to speak, please come to the podium.
Jim Twami is my name, 824 Sixth Street. I previously had property over on First Street. And mostly, whether they close or leave that street open doesn't make much difference to me because I don't have much involvement over there anymore. However, I would like to know who was surveyed on this? The property owner or the tenants? Occupants that live on that block?
As far as closing the street down?
Yes.
It's my understanding, Administrator Rich can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's a recommendation coming from our street department, MINDOT, and our public safety, fire department, Public Works have expressed concerns with that street?
No, I mean, did they not survey the people that live over there?
That's what the public hearing is for, for people to come and express their concerns on it.
In other words, they'd have to come here, otherwise, nothing.
Well, they could send an email, too. We did receive emails today.
Okay, well...
Mayor, I did, on the one block that it directly affects the residents, I did call whoever we had on file as a utility billing owner. So I did call each individual property owner and ask them if they had questions or concerns before we even started this process.
You sent notice out to the property owners?
I called whoever we had on record for the utility billing, the name and the phone number. I called...
There are nine homes on that block. Five of them are rentals. Three are duplexes, and two of them are single-family rentals. I would think that it would be more of a concern to the people that are living there on the block than it would be to the property owner, because they're the ones that are going to live with that. That's why I was wondering if they contacted whatever tenants were there and/or on the single-family ones, the same thing there, if they contact them would be owners probably on those.
Do you know the mailer? Did that go to the tenants, or did it go to the utility, whoever's on the utility?
It went to the landowner.
Okay.
You know, so you can't go off utility because some situations, the owner is the utility...
Sometimes the tenant, yes.
And sometimes it's the tenant.
Yep.
I would think legally, we'd have to send it to the owner first.
You would have no way of knowing what tenants are over there if the landlord's paying the utilities.
Correct.
Well, it's just a question that I thought I'd run by here. The other thing is, it mentions that the police department and fire department are okay with it. However, you know, the police department is going three blocks further to go to get to that street now, if they close it off, because they've got to go left down the highway, up the bank hill, and across on Second Avenue. Thirty-five years ago, this same issue came up at the council. Norm McNeil and myself are the only two that were against it, because they figured if you leave it open and somebody thinks it's too slippery to drive down the hill, you've got a choice. You can go down to the highway or over to Second Avenue. And as it was, of course, it obviously did not get closed at that time. The other thing is, everybody that's got property on that street now becomes a turnaround for traffic. You know what I mean by that? The driveways are public turnarounds for some reason. And at that same time, that was brought up before, Brad Taft was on the police force at that time, I believe. No, he was not. He was on the council, no, police force.
One minute, Jim.
And he says, "That hill's an accident to wait and happen," he says. That was thirty-five years ago, and there ain't been an accident since. And I've had my rental over there for fifty-two years, and there's nobody scratched a pender coming down that hill. The worst part of it is, it's probably that it's a little rough, because every time it gets a crack in it, they patched a hole, so it's like driving over a quarter of a road coming up or down there. I just personally don't see the big reason for closing it off, and I could take that blacktop out of there and put a layer where you aren't jumping up and down, going up or down that hill. I've gone up and down that hill for as many years as I own that place, a couple times a day, a lot of times. More recently, of course, or well, say, within the last forty years, up and down that hill, riding lawnmower, four-wheeling a plow in the winter, never had no problem, nor no problem with the car going up and down. I talked to Rick Wilon today, and he said there's been a few times where he would spin out going up that hill with the grader. And, of course, he's pushing snow up. He says, "So then he'd have to back down and go at it again." So that's, obviously, if anybody that's afraid of the hill, like I say, right now, they've got a choice.
That's your three minutes, Jim.
But if they close it, I'll live with that. Or if they leave it open, leaving the people a choice, I'd go with that, too.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say, and I thank you.
Second opportunity, Steve?
Steve Anderson, 28 Fifth Street, and I don't have any, I don't live on the street, I don't anything else, don't have any direct concerns with respect to it. I understand where the street department and public safety is coming from. Understand, my preference would be to leave it open, because as I come to builders with a trailer or something on the back, I use for a street so I can park in front of builders, and it's just more convenient to me. But, I mean, I respect what the city committees are saying, and I get that. The one thing I would at least throw out for consideration is I understand that our public hearing is to vacate this street. Perhaps we should look at closing the street and not vacating it, leaving us the ability to do something at some point in the future. There's clearly a difference between closing it and vacating it. So just a thought I'm throwing out, whatever you guys do, I'm going to be very respectful of, and I'll support what you guys decide.
Thank you. We'll offer final chance for public comment. Final chance for public comment. Hearing none. We'll entertain a motion to suspend the public hearing until next council meeting, and we'll resume the public hearing number two at that time.
Mayor, can you acknowledge the receipt of the written objection?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
Thank you.
So we did receive one email. Council, you did get it on your desk prior to the meeting, from Ray McNeil. It was sent at 9:08 this morning, so please review that email prior to the next public hearing on this resolution. Thanks, Administrator Rich. Was there a motion on that?
Yes.
Counselor Benson made the motion to suspend the public hearing. Is there a second? Sent by Counselor Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Looking for a motion to approve the pre-agenda minutes for Monday, June 16th, 2025. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Counselor Benson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Looking for a motion to approve the city council meeting minutes for Monday, June 16th, 2025. I'll go ahead and make that motion. Is there a second?
Second. Support.
Sent by Counselor Benson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Looking for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Before making that motion, I'd like to remove 6A, as that is resolution 2025 vacate a portion of First Street between North Second Avenue and US Highway 2. As you just heard, we will be holding a second public hearing at six o'clock, prior to our next city council meeting. So with that removal, is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Counselor DeWall made a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Counselor Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Oh, I'm sorry. Under discussion, we'll place that under unfinished business as well. Thank you. Any opposition to that? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That will bring us to comments and suggestions from citizens present. The public comment suggestion period of the meeting is when the city council offers a time for everyone in attendance or watching from home to address the city council. Once we move on from the public comment suggestion period of the meeting, members of the public will no longer be allowed to address the city council unless the mayor acknowledges you. As a general rule, the council will listen to all comments but are not required to comment on or respond to any comments made by speakers. If you'd like to address the city council during the public comment suggestion period of the meeting, please come forward to the podium or dial 218-628-6268. Before you begin, please state your name and address for the meeting minutes. Comments will be limited to three minutes. Anyone addressing the city council will be prohibited from using obscene, profane, or threatening language or boisterous conduct that disrupts a meeting or the security of the public. Is there anyone at this time that is interested in participating in the public comment suggestion period of the meeting? If so, please come forward to the podium or dial 218-628-6268. We'll give that about a minute. Mr. Schwartzbauer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim Schwartzbauer, 27 Almanac Drive, representing the Historical Society tonight. In the, one of the things that we've always been confronted with, and you know it, is how do we get more interest in the museum? And I just wanted to point out that a couple of situations have arisen that have actually and will increase the amount of people coming through the museum. And I just want to identify those. The first one happens to be when I was approached as treasurer of a nonprofit to be able to be the fiscal host for Hoghead. So we took that on in regards to that, bringing in some money for that. And just the other day, $5,000, for example, came in from Irving Club earmarked solely for the kids. So things happening there. So getting us back to a point where we do more things for the kids during Hoghead Week. And in doing so, the Hoghead Committee said, "Can we do some stuff in the parking lot? And can you be open that evening so that we can have people go through the museum?" You know, if we can get kids in there, other people. So I appreciate Hoghead taking that opportunity to say, "Yes, we would like to try to help the museum out by getting some more interest from the community in there." And the second thing happened, interesting enough, the other day I was coming up here to pick up my mail, I think I was talking to you, Megan, and all of a sudden, a police officer walks in. Well, when a police officer walks in, you better say, "Yes, I will come over, Mr. Officer, and we'll talk." And at that point in time, I came over wondering what they were thinking about, and they said, "We would like to do something, when we do the take-back tonight, we'd like to do something in the parking lot at the museum." I said, "Great," you know, "And so, anything we can do to help." Well, I find out today, they're going to have mini-donuts, they're going to have other stuff, they'll have some games in there. So it is appreciated, Chief, that the police and others and Hoghead take an interest in trying to get the community involved, and at least, so we'll be open a couple extra nights that we hadn't planned on. We are hoping that more people come through the parking lot, but this is not something that we went after. These people sought us because they want to see the museum succeed, just like you do when you guys approved the $5,000 that we used to take care of the roof and take care of getting a computer system in there. Our only hope is with everything else, can we get more people interested in becoming members? And that, of course, is the next big hurdle. But at least, I want to let the council know how appreciative we are of some community efforts to try to help the museum out in regards to that. That's all I had to say. I think I stayed within my three minutes.
Oh, way, way beyond. No, that's exciting.
It is exciting. And one more thing, Blackwoods just put on a fundraiser, as you guys are aware of, I think you mentioned it at the last meeting, and picked up the check today from Eric, a little over $400. And there's some other things we're hearing about where, you know, money will come in to help Hoghead. So the attempt is to get back to an earlier Hoghead, a more community-centered, a more kid-friendly, a more utilize everything else, rather than everything has to be related to the bars. Not that they can't have things, but that's also exciting. In fact, we would not have signed on to help if it was going to be more of the same. So we appreciate their efforts, too, and also appreciate the efforts that you guys are spending close to $9,000, proved on the budget, I'm assuming, or on the bills tonight for fireworks. Very much appreciated that you'll do that. They've sure gone up in price, so.
Yes, they have.
Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim. Do you have any? All right, no other comments coming in? You go at when you're ready?
I'm on the agenda, right?
Yeah. All right. With that being said, looking for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda. Before making that motion, I'd like to pull 1B, 4B, 5A, and 5B. Anything else? No? All right, with those being pulled from the consent agenda, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Counselor DeWall made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead.
Sent by Counselor Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. 4B, communications, 840 Second Street driveway memo slash email. So in our packet was an email from the homeowners of 840 Second Street. I guess I would like a little more information on this email, and I'd like to have a full council hopefully at the next meeting to discuss it. So I will go ahead and make a motion for Administrator Rich to provide city council with emails. I think there's emails out there pertaining to the homeowner and discussion on the plans of that project. And then I would like to place this under unfinished business and hopefully address it at our next city council meeting. That'll be my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Sent by Counselor DeWall. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. That will bring us to 4B, fire department resignation. So in your packet is a resignation letter from Anthony Wood, and I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Anthony for his years of dedicated service in the Proctor Fire Department. He is moving out of state, so he does have to resign from this position, but just wanted to extend congratulations and a thank you for his involvement with the city. Any other discussion on that? If not, I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept his resignation letter.
Second.
Sent by Counselor Benson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Brings us to 5A, ordinance 06-25, second reading. So this will be the second reading for the new blight ordinance or ordinance 06-25. In your packet, you see a memo of some additions or corrections that city staff and counselors wanted to see, or police department looks like is on there as well. Administrator Rich did send out the new blight ordinance prior to tonight's meeting, along with a red-line version of the new ordinance. City council has a few options to discuss tonight, whether or not to accept ordinance 06-25. We also would, if we do accept the new ordinance, we have to name a blight officer, and we do have to set height of lawn for 91 dot 147. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to accept ordinance 06-25.
Second.
For, yeah, for a discussion, because we've got other. Sent by Counselor DeWall. Any further discussion? I know we talked about it a little bit prior to the meeting at our pre-agenda meeting, but my recommendation as far as the blight officer, I'd like to go with a 1A, 1B kind of setup, where 1A would be a police officer. And I guess I don't care if Chief Gatis would like to select that person, or just have it whoever's on duty kind of take that.
I kind of like what the wording is now, you know, me or a designee.
I like that.
To your point, it could be the patrol officers that are you do with blight today.
I like that.
Yeah.
So my suggestion was to have 1A be the chief of police or designated person by him to address any of the citation offenses, you know, junk vehicles, unlicensed tabs, that sort of thing. And then to name our building official, Mr. Boyzen, would be 1B, and he would be kind of like our siding, window treatment, those types of issues, kind of like we discussed prior at the pre-agenda meeting. Would that be all right with council, or is there a discussion on that? I will, after this motion, we'll make new motions, but I just wanted to have this discussion now, if that works. Okay? And then under 91 dot 147 lawn height, no person shall cause or permit the height of the lawn on a property to exceed blank inches. Again, there was prior discussion at the pre-agenda meeting regarding this. Counselor DeWall asked Chief Gatis for some recommendations, and I think what you're thinking was a foot, 12 inches?
Like seeing a pair of, please, a flower or three?
Three inches?
Trying to get a hold of people to see what it is.
Yeah, I don't... I would agree. Three inches is...
But I haven't got a possible answer.
Yeah. Be a lot of violations going on.
Mayor?
Counselor, Administrator Rich?
In my research, city ordinances ranged anywhere from six to 12 inches. They were all over the board.
Thank you. So you heard those, any discussion on that? Counselor Benson?
None, thank you.
Oh, I thought you held your pin up. That's usually my signal. All right, so we have a motion and a second on the floor to adopt ordinance 06-25. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. I'll go ahead and make a motion again to define the blight officer as 1A, the police chief, or his designee, and 1B would be our building official. Is that his correct title, building official? Inspector official? We'll figure that out, but... And that would be 1B. That would be my motion. Is there a second?
Support.
Supported by Counselor DeWall. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. And then I'll go ahead and make a motion to address 91 dot 147 lawn height, no person shall cause or permit the height of the lawn on a property to exceed 12 inches. That would be my motion. Is there a second?
Support.
Supported by Counselor DeWall. Any further discussion? Counselor Benson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If we happen to have a warm, wet spring and summer, and the property owner is away, doesn't get a chance to mow the yard, then what?
So in the ordinance, again, like was discussed at the pre-agenda meeting, there's got to be a level of common sense. If it rains for 40 days and 40 nights, we've got to have some leniency, right? But if that's not the case, all this does is, so Jay or the police would go check the complaint, they would come back and report to the city, the city would send a letter to the homeowner, and that starts the clock ticking to, I believe, 10 business days or five. So even if they're gone for two weeks, they come home, they have a letter, they still got 10 business days to address the issue. Does that answer your question?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Brings us to 5B, St. Luke's Arena Park and Improvement slash Accommodations. Counselor DeWall?
As per the discussion, thank you, Mr. Mayor, as per the discussion in our pre-agenda meeting, I feel that the intent in which this was put under has been completed, and I believe we can take this off. The unfinished business, 5B, can be removed.
Is that a attorney, is that a motionable? To remove an item, you've got to make a motion, correct?
Yeah, we should make a motion.
Is that your motion, Counselor DeWall?
I'll make a motion that we remove 5B.
You heard the motion by Counselor DeWall. Is there a second? Sent by Counselor Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Good news is we got rid of one item under unfinished business. Bad news is we just added one, too, so we're back to three. All right, that will bring us to 6B, resolution 21-25, accepting a donation, Proctor Golf Course. In your packet, there was a resolution 21-25 to accept donation from the Gordon Downs Trust Fund. They have agreed to donate $11,944.68 for the purchase of a Turfco 85665 blower to the city of Proctor for the Proctor Golf Course. Is there a motion to approve resolution 2125?
So moved.
Counselor Benson made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Sent by Counselor Johnson. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Brings us to six C, Hoghead Festival Request. Mr. Hinks.
Jared Hinks, Hoghead Planning Committee. Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you today. I come before you on behalf of Hoghead Festival. For half a century, the Hoghead Festival has served as a celebration of who we are as a community. This festival has become a cornerstone of our local identity. It brings together people of all ages, backgrounds, for a week of fun. It's a time when families, friends, and neighbors come together to reconnect, celebrate, and create lasting memories. It's a tradition that has seen multiple generations come together to enjoy everything from parades, local food vendors, arts and crafts, and family fun. But traditions, especially ones like Hoghead, do not maintain themselves. They require resources, planning, and community support. This year, as we celebrate the fiftieth anniversary of Hoghead, we are reaching out to the city council, request funding to ensure that this milestone event can continue to grow and serve our community for years to come. The funds will be used to cover various essential expenses, including event logistics, entertainment, family-oriented activities, and other things of this nature. We understand that the city budgets are intended for specifics. Costs that we are facing that may fall under the intended purposes of established city funding available include sanitation, security, insurance, kids, family events, music, entertainment, youth sporting awards or prizes. We are also seeking to become our own 501(c)(3) at the cost of about seven hundred dollars for the application. All money raised or collected since Hoghead 2024 goes directly to a Hoghead Festival bank account that has been established, and any funds remaining will continue to roll on.